Okay, good morning, everybody. I will call to order the Operations Committee meeting and special meeting of the Board of Directors of Marin Water on December 15, 2023. Terry, if we could have roll call, please.
Good morning. Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Monte Schmidt.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Chair Larry Russell.
Here.
And Vice Chair Ranjiv Kush.
Here. Do we have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Terry, any public comments on the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, then if we could have a vote, please to adopt the agenda?
Yes, Director Sampson.
Yes.
Director Schmidt.
Yes.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Chair Russell.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Kush.
Aye. Moving on then, any public comments and items that are not on our agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move to item 4A on our agenda, which is to approve the minutes of our committee and special board meeting that was held last November 17, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Our minutes. Great, thanks.
Second.
Thank you. Any public comments on our November 17 meeting minutes?
There are none.
Okay, then with that, could we have a vote, please, to approve our November 17 meeting minutes?
Sure. Director Sampson.
Aye.
Director Schmidt.
Aye.
Director Smith.
Aye.
Chair Russell.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Kush.
Aye. All right, onto business then, and we start with item 4B on our agenda, which is an operations efficiency project report.
Speaking of efficiency, that was two minutes. Well done.
Practice.
Good morning, Directors. Darren Machado, Operations Director. We wanted to share with you this item. We want to share this item with the Operations Committee. This item really is about operational efficiency. District staff perform a lot of maintenance on our water system, keeping it operating as intended. Some of that maintenance work can become quite repetitious, but staff's approach to the work is one of continuous improvement. And what I mean by that is leveraging technology, equipment, and/or tools to complete the work more efficiently. In this presentation, Mark's going to go through. It's about a tool we purchased for valve repair and how we're using that tool and the savings we're realizing, not only in budget, but also in staffing resources.
That's on. Okay. My name is Mark Adine. I'm the Superintendent of System Maintenance and Support Services. Again, as Darren touched on, we're here to talk about a new tool that we purchased to help out with operational efficiency. I'll go ahead and be going through the PowerPoint presentation, kind of walking through kind of the description of the tool, how the tool works, description of our valves, and we'll get to that when we pull it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go. Oops, sorry. Can't do that.
Thanks down there at the bottom. The second one, the other one over.
Yes.
I think it's that one.
Yep.
That one.
There you go.
There we go. So here we have a PowerPoint presentation for the operations efficiency regarding a valve repair tool that was purchased. So a brief overview. We'll go through the different types and functions of water valves, district valves, condition, operation, and location of the valves. We'll go through some inoperable valve impacts. Water valve operating nut, what is it and how is it used? We'll touch on valve nut replacement tool, which is the tool we're talking about that we purchased. We'll wrap up the PowerPoint with an approximate cost comparison and an overall summary. So with this slide right here, specifically goes through different types of valves and their functions. Specifically within our distribution system, we have a I listed kind of a handful of valves that we currently have in our system. Typical valves that you would find, such as a gate valve, butterfly valve, plug valve, globe valve, and ball valves. Now each one of these valves serve a particular function. So first I'd like to go through kind of the basics of what valves do. And then we can look into kind of how valves are chosen within distribution system. So first, so valves are an essential component of a water distribution system. They are used to regulate, control, and direct the flow of water. A main function of a valve is basically to stop the flow of water, especially when there's a break in a pipe. Valves also help maintain pressure and supply in a distribution system. Now with all that being said, not every one of these valves performs each of these functions. So depending on the design of the water distribution system, a particular part of the system, for example, say, a part of the distribution system needs to be regulated in flow. Typically, a butterfly valve is going to be chosen for that operation. A gate valve wouldn't be chosen for that operation. Butterfly valves are designed to restrict the flow of water, i.e. throttle the flow of water. Right? A gate valve's typical function is to start and stop water. That's what it's designed to do. So each one of these valves, depending on the design and desire of what you want that valve to do, is how these valves are chosen and installed within the distribution system. So water system valves. So the picture image on the right is a typical cloud six-inch gate valve. These are typical valves found within our system, typical size, six-inch, typical make, typical model. These cloud gate valves are installed here in the States. So within our system, we have approximately 16,323 water valves within our system, ranging from two-inch in size to 36-inch in size. So some common valve materials. How these valves are typically constructed is the valve body itself, which is seen in the picture in the burnt orange color, is composed of ductile iron. It has a heat-applied epoxy coating that has a serviceable life from the factory where it's developed of about 10 years, at least 10 years. The bolts, the stem, and the nuts, you can't really see the stem in this picture because that's where the black operating nut on the top end of the valve sits over the top of, are usually composed of stainless material to prevent corrosion. The operating nut itself is composed of cast iron. Now this is a wearable item part on these type of valves. Specifically, they're exposed to atmosphere where they're located. They can deteriorate over time, and that's just based on the conditions of where they're installed. So usually being underground inside of valve tubing, which is where they're located and how we access them, we'll get into those in a later slide. But they are exposed to atmosphere and organic stuff within the valve tubing that gets in the valve tubing and sits in contact with the valve nut. So moving on from that, a typical cost of a six-inch cloud gate valve is approximately $850 per valve. System-wide, an approximate valve replacement cost would be approximately $45,500,000. Now, this is why these are such an important asset cost within our water distribution system is the overall cost to replace these valves and why it's important to be able to have repair techniques, maintenance techniques. With that being said, like involving new tools and technology that we can perform these functions at a cost-friendly price. We'll get into the pricing in a little bit. So here we have kind of a side-by-side comparison of a new gate valve and a valve that's been in service underground for about 50 years. There's a significant difference in these pictures here regarding these two valves as you can see with the conditions of the inside of the valve. Now, the importance of these two pictures related to these operating nuts is the tubercles that you see built up on the inside of the gate of the valve on the picture on the right. That's the orange organic material that's attached to the slide gate itself. Now with that material on there, causes difficulty sometimes closing and operating the valves, exercising the valves. Sometimes these valves within the system need to be closed 10 turns, open five turns, close another 10 turns, open five turns. Sometimes you need to provide considerable torque on some of these valves. I'm six foot seven, I'm 290 pounds. I've had to wrestle some four-inch gate valves out in the field personally that I was the one walked away sweating. So the condition of the operating nut in regards to this presentation is important and the condition of the overall valve itself is important. So that's just kind of a brief rundown. You can see the picture on the left with a new gate valve. Once you close that gate valve down and that thing seats, you're probably good to go with a, you know, a good shutdown or a good throttle flow. But the picture on the right is going to require some work, so. Here we have a setup. I kind of laid out a typical function of the valve tool key that we use, the tubing, and how that valve operates. So these valves are operated with a T-handle tool that has a square operating socket on the end of it that slips over the top of the two-inch square operating nut. Typical valves are installed in the ground. They're arranged from anywhere from two to five feet in the ground, depending on the area that they're installed. So typically, you'd go up and you would locate a valve with a casted valve cap, we call them, in a street location. You would open up that valve cap and you would insert this T-handle tool down inside of the valve tubing that you can see here, and the head would sit on top of the two-inch operating nut for the valve, and that's how you would operate a nut from above ground. Some, there are some valves that are above ground where we do have a little T-handle socket wrench, like a ratchet type, where we can operate it. But typically underground, this is how this tool works and operates these valves. So here we touched on the last slide, typical water valve location. So these water valves are mostly located underground in a five-inch diameter aluminum tubing that's attached to the top bonnet of a valve. This provides access to the valve from the top of the street or sidewalk area, and they're usually marked with a valve cap that we call them that have, has our initials on it, MMWD. So typically, we would open up that valve cap that you would see there. You can see with the tape measure, measurement there that's about five inches in diameter. And this valve here happens to be about 19 inches in the ground. This one, to me, and a utility system specialist, would be a friendly valve because it's not six, seven feet in the ground. Right? They can operate it from a good operating position. But this one right here is about 19 inches in the ground, and it's what we insert that valve tool key seen in the previous picture down into the tubing to operate the valve nut. Water valve importance. So the image on the left shows what we call a Class 1 water main break. That was an eight-inch cast iron water main break on Woodland and San Onselmo. And you can see the considerable amount of water flowing across the street curb to curb. Having an operable valve in good condition with a good operating nut on it not only saves time performing an essential shutdown so the pipe can be repaired, but also includes like a net savings of water overall. If you're struggling with the valve or the valve's inoperable and you need to look at your system map and go back throughout the system, the water's still running. So overall provides a net savings of water and gives the ability for the utility system specialists to perform an essential shutdown so repairs can be made in a timely manner. As we know, when you shut down water mains around Marin County, it upsets customers. And, you know, we try to do everything we can to limit that impact. So having operable valves within our system is, is, is key. The picture on the right is more of a maintenance task force. Yes, it is a leak, and typically this would be classified as a Class 3 leak. This is more of a maintenance function. This leak right here doesn't necessarily always require a system shutdown, but it can. I've seen some three-quarter inch water pipes put out a considerable amount of water that you would think was an eight-inch water main, but it's a three-quarter inch pipe. So operable valves do play an important part to the maintenance performed on our water system as well, too. So even though the impacts don't look as great, they're kind of black and white as far as one's like a very serious impact and the other one doesn't look so bad, they still both involve, can involve an operable valve. Potential impacts of inoperable valves. Here we see the potential impact comparisons of having an inoperable valve within our water distribution system. So this here typically is Manor Road in Kentfield. So the image on the left highlighted in yellow. If we had a break in a pipe on that small section of water main, there's one valve that controls that leg of that water main. If it's an operable valve, we could shut it down and it only affects that section of water main, which includes 10 services and one hydrant. If that valve is inoperable and we need to go back in the system to, to perform an essential shutdown to make repairs, the image on the right highlighted in blue is going to be the overall affected area to include the yellow highlighted area. It will then entail not just 10 services and one hydrant, but 79 services and six hydrants. With that being said, when you depressurize a water main to perform, when performing an essential shutdown for water quality purposes, turning that water main back into service. Again, I want to bring up the net savings of water when you talk about flushing for water quality purpose. So the image on the left highlighted in yellow, to turn that water over three times per AWWA standard, you're looking at about approximately 1,800 gallons of water. The image on the right to include the extended portion of the shutdown, you're looking about approximately 10,600 gallons of water that's going to be flushed. And that's for water quality. And that can, that can grow because the purpose of water quality flushing is, one, you're going to flush till the water's clear. Two, you're going to flush till you get a good chlorine residual. So those numbers can vary a little bit, but that's kind of an approximate number of net savings of water between the two. Also involved in this, you'll see 10 services to 79 services. So you've got customer impact, you've got firefighting impact, and you've got a lengthy time performing flushing duties for water quality purposes between the two. So that's, that's kind of a picture of impacts of having these inoperable valves within the system. Here again, here's another part of our section. This is Palmeroy in San Rafael. So within here, kind of the same situation. So the image on the left in the highlighted yellow portion, you have a small section of water main to where if there was a maintenance reason or a break in a water pipe to where the system had to be shut down in that small section highlighted in yellow, you would have three services and one hydrant affected, only three people and one hydrant. The image on the right, if that valve was rendered inoperable, you needed to go back into the system, find the next operable nut. This shutdown now includes 46 services and 11 hydrants. Again, I bring up water quality flushings and net savings in water. So flushing this section of water main in the image on the left, you're looking at about approximately 2,000 gallons of water. The image on the right is approximately 20,000 gallons of water. Plus you have customers affected. The image on the left, you have three. The image on the right, you have a total of 46. The image on the left, you have one hydrant. Image on the right, you have 11. So therefore, you've got firefighter capabilities as well. Plus you'll have a considerable amount of angry customers. Here we have this tool that we purchased back in June of 2021 from Watts Utility Products. This tool is, is known as the Valve Nut RX Kit, and the cost of the tool was $9,690.10. This tool hat was available for purchase back in 2010, but really wasn't long the countrywide scope to about 2018, when people really found out about it. Watts Utility Products, their main location is in Lingusshire, Illinois. However, there is a rep in the Northern California region who we stay in contact with. With that kit comes a variety of accessories. So the, the image on the left, you have a valve stem size and shape template. So depending on the type of valve, the size of the valve, you're going to have a different size and shape stem that that operating nut sits on to operate the valve. So with this template here, we would remove the inoperable valve nut or corroded valve nut, and we would size it on the template to install a new valve. The image on the right is various equipment that comes with it. So you have magnetic sockets that are used to remove the nut or bolt that holds that operating nut on the valve stem. You have a tap and die set to where you can clean up the threads for the hold-down bolt or nut. You have a tap set, you can actually retap the valve from the top of the street. Does get a little bit lengthy in time and is a little bit kind of tedious of a task, but it does save a lot of costs in the end when this tool does work for us. Here's the operating nut assortment that comes with the kit. You can see the operating nuts on the right have a different shaft size and shape on the right. So we do get a variety kit to, to replace these operating nuts on the valves. So how it works. So here we have a staff of one. So there's multiple parts to this kit. So the image on the left, you'll see the setup. So there's our water valve location in the street. There's our staff member getting ready to remove an inoperable valve nut on top of a valve from a top, from the top side of the street. Now this valve location is the same in the one in the previous picture. It's about 19 inches deep in the ground through that five-inch aluminum tubing. So the image on the right has the head of the tool. So basically that head of the tool slips over the top of the operating nut and the aluminum spring ears on the outside are basically against the wall of that tubing and the whole thing slides down into the tubing and sits on the nut. Then the, the staff member will operate a T-handled wrench on the top that has a threaded shaft down the hollow tube of this part of the tool, which as it gets tightened down clockwise, will interlock those spring-loaded ears on the bottom and lock it into that tool to allow us to retract that operating nut out of, out of the ground. So let's see here. So the new but, the new nut operating installation is basically the opposite of that process. So there's a second shaft within this tool kit that basically clamps, lightly clamps a new valve operating nut that allows us to insert it down over the top of the shaft of the valve once it's sized accordingly. Within that hollow shaft, you can also insert a socket extension that slides down into the top with the socket head on it with a magnetic socket that holds the operating nut secured bolt or nut that will secure that to the shaft. And you can operate it from the top and tighten it onto the stem itself. Once you get done doing that, you pull it out and you have a new operating nut on the valve. So in the previous couple of slides, we saw one staff member performing this valve repair duty. Here you see a typical crew that would be a, a crew of four with a dump truck, machine, service truck, and a pickup truck usually operating in a, in a street area. So this was, is what would be needed to repair a valve nut if that tool didn't work or if we didn't, hadn't purchased that tool. Now, does that tool work 110% of the times? Absolutely not. But it does provide us a viable option to perform repairs to the valves at a considerable cost savings. This picture here, so this is the socket on the T-handled valve key that's used to operate these valves. So the image on the left, you see a brand-new operating nut, and you see the squarehead socket located on the valve key tool. The picture on the right, you see a operating nut that needs to be replaced and a square socket on the, on the valve key itself. Now you can kind of determine which one's going to work better just by looking at these two images. The image on the left, you're going to have a good grip on that operating nut that is going to allow you to exercise the valve if it needs to be exercised and perform a timely shutdown if needed. So the image on the right, you're going to struggle with the valve a little bit on that and it's probably going to slip and you're going to be turning around and around thinking you're turning the operating nut, and you're going to probably have to go back in the system to find an operable valve on that one. Here we have, so since the purchase of this tools, we have repaired 25 valves with the use of this tool without having to excavate to perform repairs. The image on the left again shows a brand-new operating nut compared to an old operating nut. There's a pretty considerable difference between the two. And the one I write is just an image of valve operating nuts that have been repaired with the use of this tool. So valve repair cost comparison summary. So just briefly, approximately, so the repair costs with this new tool. So each one of the new valve operating nuts has an approximate cost of $80. The labor cost for one staff member to go out there and perform repairs to that valve is $232. There's no excavation cost for a total repair cost of $312 approximately. Moving to the right, the repair cost with excavation. So again, you have your new two-inch valve nut cost at $80. An average excavation cost to replace an operating nut with a crew of four, as seen in previous slides, is $7,738.76. That includes street restoration, permits, time, and staff for a total cost of $7,818.76. Times that by 25, and there's a pretty considerable approximate difference between the two. So this valve has, has paid for itself more than once over. In summary, this is an example of operational maintenance efficiency with the purchase of new tools. On average, 10 valve nuts are replaced annually for an approximate savings of $75,000. This is proven to be an overall saving in staffing resources performing valve maintenance. Again, does a tool work 110% of the times? Absolutely not. But when it does, it pays for itself and provides us another opportunity before maintenance within our system. So with that being said, that, that concludes our, our PowerPoint.
Thanks a lot, Mark. I, I feel like in the last year, Ben, maybe this is the first time we've had a presentation on how things actually work. It's really, it's cool. It's really good, and I hope we can do this on occasion to learn just more about how, how our operations actually work. Thanks a lot, Mark. Do we have any board comments? Larry Russell, I'll start with you.
The only comment is, why didn't you buy it sooner? It looks great.
Thanks, Larry. Jed?
Did I miss it? Did you say the cost of the new tool?
Yeah, it was approximately $9,610 and some change.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a pretty good ROI. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Matt?
Thank you for the presentation. You guys have a, you know, probably goes without saying, but a very difficult job to do, advocate for things that people can't see and only want them to work when you absolutely have to have them work. So kudos to your crew, especially developing a way to make sure the efficiency is a little bit better for something that's really important. In fact, it's so important that it came before this board in the budget for the valve exercising crew as part of that budget to see if we can get that back in and make sure our system remains reliable. How are we doing on the valve maintenance crew in terms of getting that, that component back up and running?
Yeah, we have that budgeted for next fiscal year, beginning July 1st, but we are making arrangements right now to get that program up and running. We're looking at equipment, purchasing additional equipment, and we're also looking at valve exercising programs such as software and what we're going to use and how that'll implement with our current system.
Great, that's really good to hear. We might even see a better ROI with more people in the valve exercising crew using this tool. So great, thank you.
Yeah, we actually have a vendor coming out in, I think, the middle or end of January to go over some valve exercising software with us.
Great, thank you.
I'll just say, I agree with Ranjiv. It's really great to actually, you know, have a chance to, to understand how things work. It's not knowledge that I came into this board position with, and, but it's obviously really relevant and, and it's great to see the program that you guys have developed, you know, giving thought to cost savings and efficiencies. And I'm curious what the other ball valves do, what the other valves do. I was like trying to figure out what they all do. So I, this is really valuable for us to, to learn this kind of stuff. And I think, you know, the, you know, the cost savings on getting to these valves before they corrode to the point where you can't get them out with this tool is, is obviously the breakpoint, you know, what a cost savings. So, you know, the, the frequency with which we maintain these and replace them, it's a no, it's a no-brainer to stay ahead of it as much as we can. So thank you for what you're doing. Really appreciate it.
Good.
Yeah, good. You know, Ben, just following that, I, I don't know if we have programs in place to recognize, you know, proactive thinking on achieving efficiencies, financial gains, anything that encourages all of us to think about how we can improve our systems. That would be good. But Mark, before we, before we end, you noted that valves on occasion are used to reduce pressure within the system. And I've, I feel like I've also heard discussion about testing alternatives to valves, turbines that we use that, you know, to both reduce pressure and potentially generate energy. I don't know if, are, are we, are we actually testing technology like that now? And?
We have looked at, and the industry labels those microturbines, microturbines in our system. And the locations that were identified, the ROI was not dramatic. And because we're talking about relatively small volumes, the the strategic plan we're going to be bringing to you on Tuesday, we do have that captured as an item to look at again and ensure we're really kind of holistically looking at renewable energy opportunities throughout the system. So we'll be talking about that a bit more on the reliable or resilient water system goal element of the strategic plan that's coming to the board.
Great. Thank, thank you, Ben. Terry, do we have any public comments?
There are none.
Okay, then thanks again, Mark. Darren?
Thank you.
And we'll move on to item four C on our agenda, which is an amendment number one to MA six one zero two with Miller Pacific Engineering Group in support of the construction of the Pine Mountain Tanks Phase One project.
So before we get going, I just wanted to share as folks, no, obviously with Crystal Yesman's departure, we've been in a recruitment process for her replacement. So today's presentation, I think, will be kicked off by our new Director of Engineering, Alex Anaya. Congratulations, Alex.
Thank you, General Manager Hornstein.
Thank you very much. I really look forward to continue working with General Manager Hornstein and the board and other district staff on all the exciting projects coming forward. So and to kick it off, so I'm Alex Anaya, Director of Engineering. Here this morning, I have Mark Hazary, Engineering Manager of Construction, who's going to be presenting this amendment. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations, Alex.
Thank you.
Mark Hazary, Engineering Manager of Construction. Item four C before you is a review and refer recommendation to the full board for approval of a First Amendment to a professional services agreement with Miller Pacific Engineering Group to expand geotechnical observation services and materials testing associated with the construction of the Phase One Pine Mountain Tanks Project. The original agreement included a scope for incidental general observation and as needed materials testing to ensure compliance and conformance with our geotechnical report. However, during construction, which has since begun August twenty twenty three, the project team identified that ideal quality assurance would really require continuous special inspection on certain aspects of the work at near full time levels. And this is also to ensure compliance with California building codes and standards. Some of the scope of items with Amendment One include observation of shotcrete and reinforcement placement, soils excavation and fill placement and soil nail drilling and grouting as well as load testing. So the original budget estimated roughly seventy seven days at about two to four personnel hours per day. It was, it was a limited budget and scope. The overall construction will occur about two hundred and forty working days. And so this proposed amendment will add about one hundred and eighty working days for geotechnical support services at roughly six to eight personnel hours per day. It also includes a proportional increase to office staff time for a total proposed amendment cost of about three or exactly three hundred and five thousand dollars. And this results in a revised contract amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. All work will be performed on a time and expense basis. And we are also optimize when we call out this consultant to avoid any type of time or cost impacts associated with standby. So staff do recommend to the operations committee to review and refer this item to a regularly scheduled board meeting for approval for the general manager to authorize the Amendment One to miscellaneous agreement sixty one oh two with Miller Pacific Engineering Group for special inspection, geotechnical services and testing related to the Pine Mountain Tanks Phase One project.
Thank you, Mark. Board comments? Matt, starting on your side?
No, if you could just help remind us again why the, why it went from seventy seven days to two forty?
Yeah, certainly. Really. So the original budget and scope assumed that we would just call out the geotechnical engineer on an as needed basis if something occurred during construction. And this is typical to the majority of our construction projects. And so at the time, the, the, the contract went out, which was in May of twenty twenty two, about a year prior to construction. They just estimated kind of on as needed time. When we entered into construction and we developed the final design package for the retaining wall, it was determined that in compliance with California Building Code, Federal Highway Administration Soil Nail Wall Design Manual and as well the American Concrete Institute, certain aspects of our work requires full time continuous inspection for very specific items that really require specialized training. And so we needed to amend this contract to provide for that service.
Great. No, thank you. That helps quite a bit, especially with the location of this project and the, and the size of it. So we have to get this one right.
Yes.
Thank you. No further.
Monty? Jed? Larry? Any comments?
Sure. Miller Pacific is a great firm and they do excellent work. We've been very pleased with them over the years and I've used them outside of the water district. So I'm a hundred percent behind them.
Just thanks, Larry. It is, it is a big increase in, in, in the, the budget allocated to Miller Pacific Engineering. Any concerns or on the impacts of the total budget for the, the Pine Mountain Tank Replacement Project?
No, Director Kush, that's a good question. No, the way this project's scheduled, you know, the real bulk of all the geotechnical work is in this first phase. It's involved with the construction of the retaining wall. And the second phase will have some geotech work, but mostly, you know, just pertinent to just compaction, which is a lesser degree of involvement and requirement. So the big cost is in this first phase. And, and with the additional cost, I think it's important to make sure we get the, the correct quality assurance on this product to set us up for success in the second phase.
Thanks, Alex. Understood. I'm guessing that we'll be getting budget to actual reports at some point to understand how well we, how, how, how well we're estimating this type of work. So maybe just something that would be, you know, good for us to be paying attention to and, and keeping on top of.
Sure.
Thank you. So with that, do we have a motion to refer this item to, for a full board approval?
So moved. Second.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Terry, any public comments?
There are none.
Okay. Thanks again. Mark, Director of Engineering, Anaya?
Well, I'm still here because I got, I got a few more.
Okay. I, well, that, I guess that takes us to item four D then, our pipeline extension agreement at one eighty seven Sacramento Avenue in San Anselmo.
Okay. And today for, for this item, we have Joseph Ischen's, the Engineering Support Services Manager presenting the pipeline extension agreement. You're good.
Okay.
Hello, testing. Good morning, everybody, and happy holidays. Joseph Ischen's Engineering Support Services Manager. Good to see you all. I have a very brief presentation this morning. Staff recommending the committee to refer, yeah, review and refer to a regularly scheduled board meeting, the one eighty seven Sacramento Avenue, San Anselmo Pipeline Extension Agreement. In March of this year, the county approved a building permit for the construction of a new single family dwelling and assorted other improvements on a currently vacant property at the end of Sacramento Avenue in San Anselmo. The property owners contacted the district requesting water service for the project. And staff was able to determine that it did not qualify for service under our standard conditions as it does not front an existing water main. So the, the parcel is beyond where the water main ends currently. So therefore, in order to provide service to the new proposed thirty five hundred square foot home and meet the five hundred gallons per minute fire flow requirement set by the Marin County Fire Department for the project, the extension of our existing facilities will be necessary. The extension includes approximately a hundred and sixty linear feet of six inch water main, one six inch hydrant and one one inch meter. The applicant, the applicant will hire an, a contractor with the appropriate license to install the facilities. District will provide the inspection service and all the materials for the project. Construction would, is estimated to begin in the spring. And that, that concludes the presentation, short and sweet. So again, staff is recommending the, the committee refer to a full board meeting for approval of the pipeline extension agreement.
Thanks, Joseph. Jed, start with you. Comments? Monty? Larry, any comments on this item? Pipeline Extension Agreement?
Nope, I'm cool.
Thanks, Larry. Just one clarification, Joseph. So we, we, the district covers the costs of materials and the homeowner covers the cost of construction?
The applicant, the applicant pays for all the materials, our inspection cost, other assorted labor such as project management, administration, et cetera. So the, the applicant developer fits the bill for the entire project.
Okay. Good, good to know. With that, do we have a motion to approve this, to refer this item to the board for discussion and approval?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Terry, any public comments on this?
There are none.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Joseph.
Next is item four E, our Facilities Master Plan Update.
Okay. So for this item today, we have Alicia Irish, our Engineering Manager of the Planning Group, who will be providing this informational item in a PowerPoint.
Good morning, directors. Today I'm here to present to you the Facility Master Plan Update. Great. Good morning. All right. So today I've got a couple of slides to present. We'll go over some goals of the Facility Master Plan. We'll go over what the facilities are we're looking at and then some of the next steps that we're going to take. So first off, goals. Why are we doing this? We're here to look just like all of our district infrastructure that I've been presenting to you. You know, the pumps and the tanks and the various asset classes. We're here to look at our facilities to identify some of the longstanding needs of our aging workplace infrastructure. We'll be performing a general assessment to identify the short, medium, medium and long term needs of our district workplace facilities. This will then inform us and will feed into the long term capital plan. A secondary goal is to contribute to a professional workplace environment. This is an opportunity for us to improve our workplace culture and have an environment where our employees can excel. And finally, we'll be exploring some cost savings alternatives by leveraging the current commercial sector market conditions. So now what are we looking at? Our first facility that we'll be discussing today is the Sky Oaks Watershed Headquarters. This is located at Sky Oaks Road at the entrance to the Bon Tempe and Lake Lagunitas facilities. Sky Oaks Headquarters was constructed in the late nineteen sixties. It includes the Sky Oaks Headquarters, which you see in the top right photo, as well as two portable office buildings, a fuel tank, an emergency generator and maintenance and storage sets. It supports our rangers, our watershed administration, our natural resources program managers, our fisheries and our volunteer program for about thirty to thirty three employees, including seasonal and watershed stewardship program employees. It's also our command post for our wildland emergencies. Our next facility is our Corporation Yard, which is located just across the street from this building here. Our Corporation Yard offices were built in nineteen sixty two and they support our distribution operations, our water resources and our safety groups. We also have our field supervisors temporary office, which you see in the top left photo, which has been deemed by employees as the caddy shack. In the bottom right photo, you see our warehouse built in nineteen sixty two. And in the bottom left corner, you see our emergency operation center, which is located inside of our warehouse. And finally, we have our administration building. You see in the top right corner, the dedication of it in nineteen sixty two and all those great hats. It houses our district boardroom, our general manager, our human resources, finance, engineering, IT and community service groups for approximately ninety employees. So we'll be looking at all these facilities. We'll be doing, you know, a, a condition assessment to see what are the various needs that these facilities present to us? When do these needs have to be addressed? What is the timing of those needs? And in respect to both the building codes and our ability to meet the district's needs for the next fifty plus years. We'll be starting by looking at various alternatives for our administration building, whether that is to rehabilitate in place or look at the opportunity to leverage current market conditions and potentially relocate. We have very early preliminary numbers that we've been working with a consultant on that indicate that this may be a cost effective alternative for us to pursue. We do need to validate those numbers at a staff level and really dig into them as well as identify the upgrade needs and opportunities at both the Sky Oaks and Corporation Yards. So we'll be continuing to update the board as these review progresses and we'll come back to the board soon.
Thank you, Alicia. That's great. Board comments? Monty?
Boy, you know, this is a real, again, like we sort of assume we build these things and then we're just like, we just assume that they're good to go. You know, the walls aren't falling down and, you know, and that we don't need to do much other than replace light bulbs and things like that. I know that building standards have changed on public access requirements and other things, you know, become driving forces. I think, you know, in your list of reasons why we need to look at this, I think really honestly, there's a lot of reasons, but first and foremost, really, we need to look at this as a cost effective lens. There's ultimately a service life on everything that we, we manage. And so we need to look at, and I think make the case to our customers that when we look at, at making these kinds of changes and investments, because that's what they become. We get a new building and that building will last a certain number of years. We need to make the cost effective case for doing that. So I appreciate that we're doing this. This is all about making sure that our district is well maintained and can continue to provide the service that everybody expects to happen every day without, without delay or flaws. So appreciate the work you're doing and look forward to hearing the results from this.
Thank you, Monty. Jed?
Yeah, thank you, Alicia, for the report out and I applaud the staff's focus on our optimizing our facilities. I, I've been through a lot of master planning processes. I think you start with the staff. Like what, what is, what's the most efficient way that we can provide a, 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 a strong set of facilities for folks to work and that includes transportation, it includes productivity inside the buildings, connectedness with each other and, and obviously financial considerations. So I, I think there's a lot of opportunities. I'm looking forward to the next step.
Thank you, Jed. Larry?
Sounds good to me.
Thanks, Larry. Matt, comments?
Thank you both for the presentation and also just the fact that we're moving forward with this so we don't get caught, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road with some of the same facilities. My only comment would be when we're looking at the Sky Oaks facility specifically that we include the Ranger Housing facilities as part of that, so that that would be as one group out there. Thank you.
Great. You know, I, I think the point you made, Alicia, about potentially good timing for just due to the realist, current state of the real estate market to potentially identify more cost effective strategies than continuing to invest in our existing structures is, is really interesting. I don't really, you know, I, I don't know the forces that will be driving the real estate market. I just, I do wonder if there's a window right now that might shut at some point. And if that should also bear into the process and the speed at which we, we, we move on this. I don't know, but maybe that's something to discuss with the consultants that you've brought on. Thank you.
Can I add just one more thing? I just, because Matt touched on. Can I add just one more thing? I just, because Matt touched on, you know, our Sky Oaks facility is such a key location for all the things that it already serves and, and Matt, I think, drawing a highlight on, on some of the housing needs that we've talked about. I think also as part of our recreation management plan, I think we're really recognizing that there's a need to make sure that we're able to support all the visitors that we, that do come. And that's a key location for that. And so I think it would be really maybe the right timing to ask ourselves, what are the, the visitor services that we might want to see embedded also in that location that we haven't currently envisioned? I'm sure that when we, when we built those facilities, we weren't servicing, you know, two million visitors to our watershed like we are today. So I think that's a new, maybe a new purpose and consideration that we ought to take a look at. So I'd like to see that included.
I guess my second would be on the housing side. I think there's a lot we can do to be thoughtful about our staff housing, our needs, the eighty percent are commuting in to Marin, don't live here. And even if somehow we optimize this building and don't use it as a headquarters and if, if whatever, if it becomes a residential thing, which I've heard was looked at in the past, maybe we can look for some affordable housing for our folks that work and that work here and that could be included. Is this part of the master plan, the strategic plan, this facilities process?
Yes, we, we do plan to bring this on Tuesday as an element in the strategic plan. So it's all held together. We wanted to bring this to introduce it to the board.
Thank you.
This is starting to move.
That's, that's an interesting thought on the housing. Now, Terry, any, any public comments on this?
There are none.
Okay. Thanks again, Alicia. And Alex, I'm guessing you're, you're on again for
Still here.
The next item. So you'll be discussing the Wolfpack Ridge Tanks Rehabilitation Project.
Yes, and this morning for that item, we have Zach Talbot, Associate Engineering Design, who will be presenting the Wolfpack Tanks Rehabilitation.
Thanks, Alex. Hi, good morning, Directors. I'm here to present the Wolfpack Ridge Tanks Rehabilitation Project. The project is located on Wolfpack Ridge Road in the city of Sausalito. The project will rehabilitate two twenty five thousand gallon potable water tanks, which were constructed in nineteen ninety seven. After twenty six years in service, the interior coating of both of the tanks has failed, which has led to excessive corrosion on the roof rafter system and the roof plates themselves. Staff has identified the roof and roof rafter systems in need of replacement. The rehabilitation efforts will include new interior and exterior coating to the tanks to protect them from future corrosion for the next twenty to thirty years and possibly beyond. The project will focus on one tank at a time. So we'll leave one in service to continue to provide potable water to the Wolfpack Ridge Pressure Zone. And then once that first one is completed, we'll switch over to the second tank. My engineer's estimate for this project is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and bids will open in January. If all bids are acceptable, we will, staff will make recommendation for contract award. The recommended action is for review and referral to a future regularly scheduled board meeting for contract award. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Zach. Larry, I, I know you often have comments and questions about tank maintenance and replacement. So we'll start with you, please.
Well, you know, I mean, it's kind of a done deal at this point. So, you know, we're in for a penny, in for a pound. Let's see how it goes.
Thanks, Larry. Matt?
No question, just a, a comment that it's really good to see this kind of work being done. We talked about it through the budget process. So we want to get caught up and especially doing it in a way where you're not replacing the entire tank saves quite a bit of money. So thank you.
Yeah. Jed?
Alex, I was lucky enough to go up there and check out these tanks. And, you know, this is one of those very small water districts that was independent and then we, we took it on.
That is correct.
Actually heard a story just to share from John Nelson, former General Manager at North Marin Water, that in the, when, when Marin did not have a regional approach to partnering with water supply and, and was looking to, for whatever reasons, whether it was environmental or housing or other, not necessarily invest in our northern neighbors. We got caught running out of water in the seventies and it was a pretty traumatic time. And John told me about some of our regional efforts and relationships. And one of them was Wolfpack Ridge and those houses. And they were trucking water from North Marin, from Nevada, down to, up, up to that hill in trucks, just to keep them, just to keep them fed. And then we took on that relationship. So it's a good example of how, you know, we, we can have a regional approach that can work for all of us and save a lot of money in the, in the process. So I'm supportive of this, of this process. I did one quick question. We, we did talk, and I know this is far out, about some other bigger tank investments and approaches. And I'm sure that might take ten years to do, but that can help, help serve the Sausalito Hills and, and other areas in the region and potentially partnering with Golden Gate National Recreation Area. Are we making any movement on, on that kind of effort and study?
Yeah, we're, we're still working with, you know, evaluating the system to determine locations and feasibility for that, for a more regional, you know, resilient system. So we're still looking into that with staff.
I'm supportive of this.
Thanks, Jed. Monty? Great. Zach, thanks for the, the presentation. I'm assuming that this is all within the capital budget allocation for the next fiscal year.
That is, that is correct, Director Kush. This is already in the capital budget. It's been programmed in for, for this year to, to do the project.
Okay, great. And then with that, do we have a motion to refer this item for full board consideration?
I motion we approve to send it to the board for consideration. Second.
Thanks. Terry, any public comments?
There are none.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I believe that brings us to the last item on our agenda, which is our upcoming meeting schedule.
The next operations committee meeting will be on January twelfth, nine thirty.
Thanks, Terry. And I adjourn our committee and special board meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty three.